I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic, to which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Trustee Blower.
Yes.
Trustee McGurran.
Yes.
Trustee Young.
Yes ma'am.
We're going to change the order a little bit tonight to allow people to have some public participation with what takes place in the meeting. So if you have an agenda, we are going to move that down to the section that is where the township business is, right under number four, under correspondence. And if that works out well, then we'll do that moving forward. Procedural actions. Move the adoption of motion number 24 dash 017 to dispense with the reading of the minutes from the January 4th regular meeting, the January 18th 2024 work session, and the January 23rd 2024 special meeting. Need a second?
You have it.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Blower.
Yes.
Trustee Young.
Yes ma'am.
Trustee McGurran.
Yes. Move the adoption of motion number 24 dash 018 to approve the minutes from the January 4th 2024 regular meeting. I need a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Blower.
Yes.
Trustee Young.
Yes ma'am.
Trustee McGurran.
Yes. Move for the adoption of motion number 24 dash 019 to approve the minutes of the January 18th 2024 work session. Need a second to motion?
You got it.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Blower.
Yes.
Trustee Young.
Yes ma'am.
Trustee McGurran.
Yes. Move for the adoption of motion number 24 dash 020 to approve the minutes of the January 23rd 2024 meeting, special meeting. Need a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Blower.
Yes.
Trustee Young. Trustee McGurran.
Yes. Okay, moving on. Reports. Fiscal Officer Julie Joyce Smith.
Good evening. Nice to see everyone here. For the board's consideration, I have for you certifications of purchase orders and certifications of checks written since our last meeting. This is the first real round of 2024 data to be circulated in front of you. I just do want to caution you that on the certificate of purchase orders, because I have not closed the 2023 calendar year, I still have the ability to go in and create a purchase order for 2023 as things begin in the last minute. So on this particular certification, you're going to see, continue to see 2023 purchase orders and 2024 purchase orders. So you will review and sign that. I have in front of you a stack of reports. Again, the one with the banner on the top are the receipts that came, the dollars that have been receipted in for 2024. There's an item, the very first item on the list, that receipt was noted as that was truly 2023 revenue. And I had not closed the bank statement at the time, so I was able to go back and actually put that in the correct year. So that's why that's been voided out. I also grade it out so it wouldn't confuse you. Nothing of, I mean, everything on here is of interest, but nothing that really stands out that I feel I would need to point out to you. I also have for you to review the management reports for January of 2024. There's a revenue summary report, and then there is a fund summary report. Additionally, there is the appropriation status report as of January 31st, 2024. Nothing on there that is particularly unusual. I also have for President McGurran and the rest of you to review, the first financial bank credit card statement for December. I do need President McGurran's signature on that, and if he would kindly return it to me, that would be very much appreciated. Do you have any questions about reports or anything of that nature before I move on?
I do not.
Okay. Moving on, getting ready for you for consideration for legislation. I have kind of an unusual situation. We received funds last year from the state of Ohio. They do not do a great job in telling me what items were for, and so the money was deposited under body armor for the police department, because that's what it appeared to be. But upon further investigation, it, and because Officer Little, our, our school resource officer, had asked where his 2022-2023 drug prevention use grant money was, and after some digging, I realized that a portion of it had been deposited towards the body armor. So I had to create a fund in 2023 for the 2022-2023 drug use prevention grant, and I was able to move that. Now, it didn't, in order for us to have access to it, we have to not only amend the certificate for '23, but we also have to carry the balance forward and amend our certificate for '24 so that that money is available for him to use according to the grant. There's also a balance left in the 2020, the 2019-2022 drug use prevention grant fund, and we did not carry that forward into '24. So those items are both included on the amended certificate. And then, in the same amended certificate for 2024, but with a different resolution, we are actually uncovering the money that was from the new, the new police levy, the 1.5 mil police levy. I'm finally bringing it forward. It's not available to spend yet because we haven't received it, but when we do receive it as part of the advances that we request on the real estate settlement, once we have this back from the Butler County Auditor, we'll be in a good position to use it as needed. So I'm kind of being a little proactive on that item, and since I was submitting an amended certificate, I thought I might as well put it all in one basket. So that is going to be for you next on your agenda item, and then obviously the motion to pay bills. If you have questions about the two amendments, I can either those, if you're comfortable with that, then I will turn it back over to Sergeant McGurran.
All right. Consideration for legislation. Purpose. As a financial housekeeping measure, the fiscal officer is required to have the board by resolution establish a special revenue fund for money collected from a special, I'm sorry, specified source other than the general fund. This resolution establishes that type of fund for specific drug use prevention activities in public schools for the police department for money collected from the Ohio Attorney General. Move for the adoption of resolution number 2024 dash 005 establishing a special revenue fund, number 2909, entitled the 2022-23 Drug Use Prevention, requiring that money collected from a specified source other than the general fund be paid directly into said special fund, budgeting receipts, and making appropriations for expenses, and requesting an amended certificate of estimated resources from the Butler County Auditor. Need a second?
You got one.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Blower.
Yes.
Trustee Young.
Yes ma'am.
Trustee McGurran.
Yes. Purpose. In order to financially allow for the receipt of funds received from the new 1.5 mils tax levy and reimbursement for wager, wages for drug prevention activities in public schools from the Ohio Attorney General, funds must be added to the police department's 2024 financial budget. This resolution adds those funds. Move for the adoption of resolution number 2024 dash 006, amending revenue in funds and requesting an amended certificate of estimated resources from the Butler County Auditor. Need a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Blower.
Yes.
Trustee Young.
Yes ma'am.
Trustee McGurran.
Yes. Purpose. Approval to pay the bills. Move for the adoption of motion number 24 dash 021 to pay the bills as presented through the fiscal officer's certification of purchase orders. Need a second?
You got one.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Blower.
Yes.
Trustee Young.
Yes ma'am.
Trustee McGurran.
Yes. Okay, moving on. Department reports. Administrator Lori Kyle.
Good evening. Tonight, first, I'd like to report on the $150,000 in ARPA funding from Butler County. As you recall, we submitted two projects, one to fund RAM for $75,000, and the other through Frontier Wellness to provide healthcare services to those that could not afford them. When I submitted those projects to Butler County, the county administrator responded that she suggested we have the prosecutor's office review the healthcare services portion. And I have had multiple conversations with the prosecutor's office, and at the end of the day, he recommends we not move forward with that project. He says statutorily, the township does not have the authority to provide healthcare services through a for-profit, and she is a for-profit business. So as a reminder, the county has strongly urged to have these projects submitted by the end of first quarter of this year. There is a meeting on Monday with the county administrator to go over the reporting and such. However, time is drawing near that we need to determine how to distribute the remaining $75,000. Also, as a reminder, the ARPA funds need to be expended and reported back to the county by October 31st, 2026. So time is drawing near that we need to come up with a plan, and once again, if it needs to be reviewed by the prosecutor's office to allow time for their review and response.
Have you received any other requests for the?
We have one resident recommend putting in a community garden back at the township-owned park back in Venice Gardens. I'm not quite sure how to make that happen. I did look, I am aware the city of Hamilton has something called HUGS, Hamilton Urban Gardens. It seems to be an organized nonprofit that puts in community gardens in the city of Hamilton. As per their website, they don't have an executive director at this time. I don't, I don't, you know, you would need someone that knows something about gardening to spearhead it. Seems like a good idea, but I don't know how feasible that would be.
Isn't that outside the scope of what the money was allocated for from the county commissioners in the first place?
Well, the funding of a food bank is allowable.
Correct.
So it would be getting fresh vegetables to people, you know, better access.
Flower garden, but a food garden.
I was thinking flowers.
I was too.
Sorry about that.
That's all right. Let's do.
They're throwing vegetables.
And that was an idea from a resident, so we don't have anybody to maintain it, till it, plant it, pick it, or even?
Yeah, money to fund it.
I've never gardened, so I have no idea when stuff is supposed to come out of the ground nor, nor it's not.
Does that fall, does that fall under Paul's bellywreak?
Um, no.
I was kidding.
Way to bail out on that one.
That would be a nightmare, Barry.
We just.
I think so too.
Give it to RAM. They could certainly, they would just be able to expand what they're doing.
I, I think that's a wonderful idea.
We have until when to decide that? Monday?
Um, well, they would like projects submitted by the end of the first quarter of this year. I, you know, at the meeting on Monday, I suppose I'll hear some of the other projects, just to get an idea of what other townships are doing.
Okay.
But that's about, you know, how to fulfill their reporting requirements.
That fall under that table at for the next meeting to find out?
Well, a work session would be the perfect time that, but we all need to come with ideas.
Okay. All right.
Uh, let's see. Next on the list, when the representative from Congressman Warren Davidson's office was here, he said that the congressman will be in Butler County in mid-February, and he wanted to know if the board had any suggested places for him to visit in Ross Township. Last year, when he was here, he visited with, all of our department heads, specifically with the road superintendent, to discuss about, uh, the road department being first responders, but seldom recognized as such. And he also went to visit Mean Green last year.
So they want ideas from us?
Yes, if you have any suggestions. Second, uh, next in your packet is, I have made a condensed version of the HR audit report. Just, it's, you know, an easier to read chart, and I, with the fiscal officer's assistants, will begin knocking these out in order of priority. Did you have any questions about any of the items in the report?
Not about them, but the ones that you listed for immediate action. There's three, four, four of those. Those are, where are you intending to start on those of the four? Four, which of the four is the most important to you?
Well, you know, I'm going to try to really assess what can be done, uh, sort of simultaneously. I haven't really had the opportunity to really sit down and organize my thoughts is the best way to tackle this. For example, completion of the I-9 forms. One of the other recommendations is we really need updated emergency contact information from each employee. We need each employee annually to sign off that they're familiar with how to access the employee policies and procedures. So to disseminate all of that information as a packet, so we're not, okay, employees, now we need this, and a couple days later, now we need this. I'd like to bundle it as much as possible.
A few of them seem like they should go pretty quick. They don't seem.
Yes.
Long, long-term things. Okay.
It might be, you know, a little cumbersome, like organizing the employee files. Right now, we basically have one file, but you can, you can have the personnel file, you can have a confidential file, you can have a payroll file. So I just, I'm going to get legal guidance. There was, in the OTA, one of the OTA newsletters, there was an article that, that what files you can have. I'm just going to confirm that before I venture down this. So some of it's going to be rather cumbersome, but.
Are these files on your computer or?
No, it's, yeah, they're paper files back in the locked cabinets.
Okay.
Looks like HR. So do we do anything as far as keeping track of chemicals, like EPA would want us to keep track of exposure to our employees, and you have to keep that for like 20 years in case something happens? They have to see that they were exposed, was our fault or not our fault? Do we do anything like that?
That's what you do in construction, I didn't know.
Because we do, you know, deal with chemicals. I imagine we spray, we, deterrence for weed growth.
Those would be good questions for the road superintendent.
We don't, I mean, we have records of when we spray it, and that gets audited by us.
Who was, who was he, a supplier?
Yes, yeah. Who applied it, what day it was, what the wind was, all that stuff.
That's just in case somebody comes back and sees you years later and say, wait, you weren't exposed to it. Okay.
Um, next to let you know, I am still working on gathering the information about the streetlight conversion to LED. I've gotten a little bit of information. Uh, our contact said that they do, right now, they attempt to replace bulbs. However, if they are not able to replace a bulb, then they automatically upgrade the fixture to LED. She says if it's a mercury vapor, they don't have any replacement parts, that's automatically upgraded. They, she sent me a GIS mapping of the streetlights that they have on our account, but she said they're going to go out and do a field audit. So I'm not quite sure why it's taking so long, but we're getting the information little by little.
Is that an expense to us?
For them to?
Convert?
Oh, yes.
Um, my question to her was cost to upgrade LED. Is it possible to transition to LED individually as the streetlights burn out? Do they, or need to be replaced, or do we need to replace all of them at the same time? So she just said that they upgrade to LED. I don't know that we've ever gotten any kind of labor charge or.
Once they put it up, we get discharged for using it too. Okay.
And if, if light goes out, if replaced and the bulb doesn't work, then they automatically upgrade to the LED. In your packet is nuisances update. The trailer on Oriole Drive, we're not quite sure what the holdup is on that. Trustee McGurran, you said you spoke with the Butler County Sheriff's Office, that it must be paperwork holdup on there, and the auditor's website still indicates that it's owned by the deceased party, and the gentleman who apparently purchased it can't act on it until it's legally in his name.
Right. That's what I was told.
Appears to be in a quasi-state.
I do know from experience, the sheriff's department, the department that handles it, they will not transfer the title until all fees are paid, outstanding fees, and it may not be, it may be something from a mortgage, a lender, it can, it could be a court fee. So until all the fees, and it's not even paid, they have to collect them all, and then it all gets paid at one time, and then they can transfer the title. So it, it can take a while because they, as things trickle on.
Okay. And in regards to the burnt structure on Robin Avenue, the fire chief and I will be going to a hearing on February the 26th, so that process is moving forward. Hopefully the judge will rule that we can go ahead and get that property demolished. And finally, for your consideration, our two motions. The first one is, we, the board has been asked to appoint a representative to the 2024 Butler County Emergency Management Agency Advisory Council. There is a meeting on February the 13th at 3:00 PM that whoever is appointed will need to attend. And the second motion, the fire chief has submitted an employee's request for educational expenses reimbursement to get his medic certificate. I have reviewed the application. It is my recommendation for approval. He is employed by Ross Township part-time. He does have one other employer. So based on the policy, we would pay 50%.
And as I read through that, he, he does understand the reimbursement?
Yes. Yeah, he read the policy. He actually signed off on it as well, Russ.
We have someone that is going to be a representative on that?
I'd like to be considered for the advisory council.
Let's flip the coin then.
And I guess we should have discussion.
Let him take it.
Thank you, Dave.
Yes, sir. I'll be your stand-in.
Okay. Move for the adoption of motion number 24 dash 022 to nominate and appoint trustee Keith, Keith Blower as representative to serve on the 2024 Butler County Emergency Management Agency Advisory Council. I need a second.
You got one.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Blower.
Yes.
Trustee Young.
Yes ma'am.
Trustee McGurran.
Yes. A purpose. Educational expenses reimbursement for part-time firefighter EMT Samuel Heimkrider for medic certification. Move for the adoption of motion number 24 dash 023 to approve educational expenses reimbursement of, in the amount of $3,979.81 for part-time firefighter EMT Samuel Heimkrider for a medic certification program payable following the guidelines set forth in the educational expenses reimbursement section of the benefits and compensation policy of Ross Township summary of personnel policies. Need a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Blower.
Yes.
Trustee Young.
Yes ma'am.
Trustee McGurran.
Yes. Okay. Uh, next report would be from our fire department, Chief Steve Miller.
Thanks, Russ. For the month of January, the department responded to 105 incidents. Eighty-six were EMS-related, 65 in Ross Township, 14 in the Village of Millville, mutual aids once into Morgan Township, four in the city of Hamilton, one into St. Clair and one into Crosby. We did 19 fire runs, 13 in Ross Township, one in the Village of Millville, three mutual aid runs into Crosby, one into Hamilton, and one into Fairfield, which we made yesterday. They actually requested the use of our gator to retrieve a victim that was about a half a mile off the road. Uh, we received mutual aid once from Morgan for an EMS assist, and one from Colrain to assist us on an MVA. Uh, as promised, I gave the board, actually set the board, and you have a packet to your 2023 annual report. Uh, just gives you a kind of snapshot of what we did last year, and some significant events and major milestones that we met. So if you have any questions, be more than happy to answer. That's all I have for you.
Any questions?
I have none.
Thank you, chief. Uh, road superintendent Paul Bullock.
Thank you, Russ. Um, so I went, Lori and I attended the planning session with Butler County Engineers. Just a couple notes from there. Uh, their project in our township is going to be New London Road from 27 up to Harmon. It is slipping, there's a slide there going down the hill, so they're going to be doing some major work on that and then paving it by the end of the year. And they are also keeping an eye on this dry well down in front of Gunther's across from Station One that isn't working right, and they're just, they're going to monitor it and see what they need to do with it. And just as a side note on that, um, the Butler County salt contract is $90.31 per ton. We, again, are saving quite a bit of money. Ours is only 77. It's still expensive, but it's $13 less than theirs, so. Uh, the paving contract for this year, the bids came back yesterday, and good news, they came in $47,000 less than the estimate. So it's.
Do more.
Please?
Do more.
Yeah. Just fortunate to do that. Um, the only other thing I have is, there's a Butler County Engineers Annual Township Seminar where they have a dinner and a seminar, and they invite the three of you and myself and Lori to that. It is 6:30 on February 29th. It's a Thursday. I'll have the RSVP list. If any of you want to go, let me know. It's at the engineer's office and.
Paul, on an interesting note, I think they're going to have a really good speaker this year.
Who's that?
My husband.
Busy that day now. Uh, it's, it's a good informative dinner usually. That's all I have. That's all I have besides that. So if any of you want to go, let me know in the next week or so. I, I think by the 16th. And I'll send that list in. Julie, I'm assuming you're going then, right?
I don't know. I've not been invited.
I'm inviting you.
I'll take you. See my gift.
All right. Thank you, Paul. Police Department Sergeant Brian Rogers.
Thank you, Russ. In the month of January, we had a total of 862 calls for service. We had 18 auto accidents, one burglary, seven domestics, one drug activity arrest, five mental EDP calls, one overdose, five OVIs, one shots fired called, 14 suspicious people or vehicle calls. We had 12 adult arrests, one juvenile arrest, 229 business checks, 206 vacation checks, 76 extra details. We had 94 traffic stops, writing 43 citations with 24 warnings. In front of all of you is the police department's interview report as well that documents all of the accomplishments of the police department from last year. If you have any questions for me as well, I can answer those for you. And that's all I have.
Any questions?
How soon till we get our new officer out of the academy?
They graduate February 28th.
Great.
Thank you, Sergeant Rogers. Township business, old business. Anything from the administration? Anything from the board?
I have none.
New business. Discussion on the Ross Hamilton Jed. That's why a few of you are here tonight. We're going to throw this out there and we'll discuss it. And we've moved public participation a little later to hopefully field any questions that, that you might have, if we can. I stated if I were elected to this board, I would review the developmental issues in Ross Township. What I have learned is that three people, none of which lived here then or now, conceptualized an idea of developing Ross and using a Jed to do it. There was a sales pitch put together that included a project named Spooky Nook that was going to bring logistical nightmares to Ross. And it was used as a sales tool to get what they wanted. Let me share some of the aspects of our Jed. An excerpt from Section 3 of the Jed states, "The township and the city intend that the creation and operation of a district shall and its purpose of the district shall be to facilitate economic development." Another excerpt states, "Police, fire, and emergency medical services shall be provided to the territory and the district in the same manner as provided in the rest of the unincorporated areas of the township." The township shall have the right to issue and reissue levies in all areas of the township, including the territory of the district, for the provision of such services. Goes on to say, "Contract grants the Jed Board the power and authority to adopt a resolution to levy an income tax within the district in accordance with Ohio Revised Code." It also says, "The contracting parties agree that the township shall have the right in its sole and absolute discretion to grant real property tax exemptions pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code within the district for any purposes permitted by the said statutes." Furthermore, the contracting parties agree that the township shall have the right in its sole and absolute discretion to grant all other incentive and real property tax exemptions within the district as otherwise permitted under the Ohio Revised Code. And the next one, we get a little bit of clarity about the hotel issue. "For a period beginning on effective date ending upon the expiration or termination of this contract and to the extent that the township is legally able, the township agrees to cooperate with the city of Hamilton and use its best efforts to do all things necessary to include in the territory of the Hamilton Community Authority any real property within the district upon which a hotel, motel, or other establishment offering a lodging fee is constructed or operated. The city agrees that any community development charges as defined in Ohio Revised Code paid with respect to the hotel property shall be used in furtherance of HSA purchases, purposes." In an article in the Hamilton Journal, what that, what they report is as it pertains to that hotel, "The hotel tax will go to Spooky Nook Parking with the idea that the sports complex is creating demand for hotels. As part of their pact, the township agreed to do all it can to incorporate the Jed areas under the jurisdiction of the Hamilton Community Authority created to raise funding for Spooky Nook Parking and other amenities such as transportation in the area." That is why they wanted to put hotels here. Former township administrator Bob Bass, who has never been a resident of Ross, wrote a letter to the city manager of Hamilton dated May 14th, 2019, thanking him for a meeting with himself and former trustee Tom Wilsey. It goes on to suggest that Ross should enter into an agreement with the city of Hamilton to form a Jed to begin development in Ross. As a Ross resident, I wasn't asked if I wanted my town to begin a major development that will forever change the landscape of the town that I call home, and I'll bet no one else was either. Nonetheless, the initial meeting only included one of the then trustees, but I am happy to say that as, as a result of that meeting, the results of that meeting were reported to the trustee board within two days after the open board meeting. This is the point when the discussion of development was started by administrator Bass and trustee Wilsey. The creation of the Joint Economic Development District must have a minimum number of properties in it. The parties involved reached a point of desperation resulting in the inclusion of six smaller properties on School Road and one on Layhigh that are currently designated for residential, single-family use. I'm sure our friends residing on School Road and Mardel Court are glad to know that the possibility exists that the parcels within that Jed can be zoned for business. Of the 14 properties in the Jed, 50% are owned, currently owned by Burns Farm LLC, and 21% are owned by Welch Real Estate Holdings LLC. It just happens to be the brother-in-law of the person that wants to develop all of the, the Burns Farm. I would categorize that as a convenient luxury, considering one family would own and control 71% of the existing properties of the Jed. And that does not include the 350-acre portion of the Burns Farm they are still trying to purchase. There's another way to look at it. I'm the manager of a large apartment complex, and one of my tenants politely asks if they can paint their living room blue. That is within my authority to say yes. After all, I don't have to look at it, and it's going to get repainted when they leave anyway. The next week, another tenant politely asks if they can paint their living room and all of the other rooms and the outside of the building, and if they can widen their driveway to fit their big truck in easier and put a large shed in the back to store their stuff. I say to them, that's going to cost a lot of money. And they tell me they would like to charge the people within that building an extra fee for the opportunity to live in that building. I ask, didn't you run into a financial difficulty when you tried that where you used to live? And by the way, why do you want to do this? And they say to me, because I want it to be like the last place that I just left. It is within, is it within my authority to say yes? Should I approve something that important without asking the stakeholders of the apartment complex? No. We, as the managers and caretakers of this township, take our jobs as the stewards of your money and trust you have shown very seriously. You, the stakeholders, deserve to have your voices and opinions heard. I believe that is where we stand with this Jed. I do not believe that the stakeholders of this community have been given the ample opportunity that they deserve to voice their opinion about how they want their community to develop. I realize that the trustee board is elected by the people with the confidence and the trust to do what is right for the residents. It is my opinion that embarking on a project of this magnitude should be treated differently. Moving forward with consideration to the scale of proposed development in Ross Township and with regard to the Jed, the large farm areas that can be included in the Jed, and since there is only one property sold presently within the Jed, and the fact that there has been no money received into the Jed, and considering there has been turnover on this board, we will begin discussion pertaining to the dissolution of the existing Jed. We will then make a concerted effort using all methods available, all communication methods available, to make the Ross stakeholders aware of any such development and encouraging several rounds of meetings with residents of Ross Township to gather their opinions on and if and how they want this township to develop. There will be complete openness and transparency about what is being considered for the development. That's all I have to say about Jed right now. We will have public participation here in just a minute. Anything else from the board?
Nothing at this time. Not yet.
Announcements. Today is Ohio Township Day. The first day of February is designated as Ohio Township Day in recognition of township officials and employees of the Ohio Township Association and its officers. Anything from the board?
I have nothing. Excuse me.
Correspondence. Anything from the administration? Anything from the board?
I have nothing.
Okay. Now, we will go to public participation. Individuals who wish to address the board must speak from the podium and state their name and address for the record. Questions should be made clearly and concisely within the five-minute time limit. One person's time may not be yielded to another. Comments should be directed to the board with courtesy and respect. Any responses from the board will be delivered in like kind. First up is Ellen Yordi. She wants to speak of the strategic development taxation, understanding the Jed, and wants to know information about the TIF, the Jed, and the Community Authority, that being an NCA. Please continue. Thank you, Ellen.
Name is Ellen Yordi. I live at 2941 Layton Road. I do have a question. I'd like your explanation of what a Jed is and what purpose does it serve to the township and the municipality it is partnered with? That's one. The other one, I'd like to know what strategic taxation, what strategic development taxation does this board have in mind to ease the burden created by future development in Ross? The third one is, I'd like to know what your understanding of a TIF, a Jed, NCA, and a state is. Which one of these development taxation strategies raise the taxes for existing Ross Township resident?
Speaking of what a Jed is, from the Ohio Attorney General, and specifics of any, any Jed, I, I guess are, it will be negotiated. But a Jed agreement enables townships, cities, and villages to co-op, to co-op, to cooperatively address concerns associated with economic development, diminishing local revenues, growth, and annexation pressures. The Jed provides a local community approach to solving economic development issues issued by, issues by allowing local governments to enter into legal contracts that have the potential to increase revenues, create jobs. Jed contractual agreements, which vary by jurisdiction, serve as significant economic development tools for local communities.
So what does that mean?
To, to me, that means if a township wants development, if there is an issue with annexation, if we're getting pressured, which we're not, that is a joint effort that can be made between a township or a village and, and a city.
City.
To put forth an economic development.
And how do they do that? Why does a township have to join with the city, a municipality?
Why they have to, I, I don't know. I'll have to look that up.
I know?
Yep.
Because townships can't put on income tax.
Okay.
So you have to have a city to do that. Okay, so you don't have a plan other than taxing the people of Ross when any type of development comes, road improvement, fire department help, social work. What's your plan? Tax? That's your only option?
That would be, that would, that would be an option to put.
The only option.
It, it is, but that's an option that the people of the township deserve to answer. If they want Ross not to develop, then yes, their taxes are going to go up. That's how it works.
Okay. But they wouldn't want a way where only these group of people are taxed. Why should I be taxed? Because that's being developed.
Again, I.
Why shouldn't the businesses and the residents and anything that goes on that property or any other property in Ross Township? Why should I be taxed for that? I'm not benefiting from it, per se.
Should the township be forced to have development to alleviate?
It's coming.
Maybe.
How do you not see that happen?
I'm not saying it's not coming. Some of the things that were in this, we now see why there was a hotel forced in there. That was, that was denied many times when I sat over there. And now we see why they wanted it. They want the, some of the tax money that's from that hotel to pay for a parking garage and parking facilities at Spooky Nook.
Would we not get taxes from hotel tax?
We would. Yeah.
We would.
Yeah.
And what would that money be used for?
Whatever the township needs it to be, road improvements.
Thank you. Okay, what's question number two?
I'd like to, I'd like to jump in and say something real fast, going, going back in time.
You agree with everything?
Oh, yeah. Well, I'm, oh, I'm. Oh, you haven't heard me yet? Give me a second. Um, the possible developer at that, at that time, he had put aside 2.5 acres for possible hotels. City of Hamilton never once said that they were invested in, in the hotels. They never once said that. Not, not that I've ever heard. That was the developer saying, I'm going to use X amount, X amount of acres for this and X amount of acres for this. They'll folks home whatever. But nowhere do I recall that, and it's in the paperwork, I understand that. You see that in there, that they would, they would occur something by that if that hotel went in. But they were not a stakeholder in that. And they, basically, for the way the Jed is set up now, and correct me if I'm wrong, city Hamilton is, is our paper person. They're going to get under 5% of that Jed, and when Jets go in, to handle that paperwork and collection of that money to send it back to Ross. But they've never once had any type of foothold in the door to say, hey, this is what I really want to see you doing, Ross. That's not occurred yet. That, that's, his, his master plan for the 300 and some odd acres was two-point or three-point acres up towards 27 for a possible hotel. But this, the city of Hamilton has, has not been a stakeholder, any of that. We went to them, could have went to Fairfield, could have went to city Hamilton. City Hamilton had the best price. That's, that's all that is as of right now. But, they were never a stakeholder for wanting to put in a hotel. And at that point when we were speaking, there was no, no hotel chain even come forward and said, "Oh yeah, we're interested in that." That's, that's where we were at that time. I, I understand what the paperwork says. But, yeah, there were, there were different allocations of how City of Hamilton would get a part of, of a tax, bed tax and all that. But, it, it never, never moved forward other than the paper of, of what the City of Hamilton get for us joining their JED because we'd actually spoke about other parcels which have gone with Fairfield, but of course, there's nothing moving there too. But that's, I, I'm not, not disputing.
Yeah.
But, but there's, it makes it sound like the City of Hamilton wants to put in a hotel, and that's, that's never been discussed.
I'm not, I'm not saying.
I give it back to you, Ellen.
I'm not saying that it says that they do, but it's open to happen.
It could, yeah. Any developer can try to put whatever they want in there and get it by zoning and Butler County Development, and then, of course, we can mown and grow all we want. And I've been up there with zoning and lost a few of those battles with them, and they've, they've moved forward with what I didn't, didn't think should have, have happened, but.
And in, and in the JED, and referring back to the JED, not, not that there's been anything proactively done to put it.
Correct.
But it says, "For a period beginning effective blah, blah, blah. And to the extent the township is legally able, the township agrees to cooperate with the City of Hamilton and to the best of its efforts, do all things necessary to include in the territory."
That is black and white that I never.
It's in the contract.
It, it never.
If it's on, on the paper, they can enforce it then.
It's in this, it's a 78-page, page contract in the JED.
I'll be honest.
So I'm not saying, I'm not saying that it is coming to fruition or would.
Yeah.
I'm saying that it's in there to happen. It's in there where it could happen.
Correct paragraph, they can force us.
Encouraging. I won't, I won't say force us. I would say it's very encouraging. It says, "And use, use to the best of its efforts to do all things necessary to include in the territory." So that's, that's not a must or a shall, but it's a.
Yeah, it's not a must, and we still have, have a say so.
It was a carrot because we do not have the ability to collect a hotel tax regardless.
Right.
Even in a JED, we do not have the ability to collect a hotel tax. Hamilton does because they negotiated such a low administrative fee. It's my understanding that was put in, that if, if a hotel would go in, they would have the ability to collect the hotel tax on it. We aren't, we're not party to the hotel tax. But that was a carrot because they negotiated such a low adminis, 95.5 is unheard of in the JED world.
Right.
Absolutely unheard of. And it was also, it was also because at the time, there was annexation litigation going on with another township. They wanted Ross to join them. There was no material reason for Ross to join. It would not have benefited Ross to join. But, it, that opportunity was used to say, "Okay, fine, you want this, we want this." And the, what Ross wanted was no annexations in perpetuity. The JED goes away, the Hamilton is under no obligation to honor that at this point. Those were the give, the quid pro quo, if you will, of this agreement. It wasn't saying we are going to build a hotel. It, should one come up, we would not stand in the way of them collecting the hotel tax because it's in the JED. That's, but I think Pat Woodside would be.
When you said it was used as a carrot, used as a carrot for what end?
Hamilton would have an opportunity to, to do the hotel tax on anything here if it would come up. That's my understanding. That was my conversation with Pat Woodside when trying to understand it.
Well, look at it this way, they put it in there, and they could.
They could.
It's just like having a pee in a cup. All right, I'll be damned, it's in the contract, we have to do it.
Well, if they, if, if a hotel goes through, there's no skin off our nose if Hamilton collects the hotel tax.
Well, it's true, no skin off our nose, but we, do we really want a hotel?
That's beside the point. I think that's, that's the last effort. I mean, if we don't want it, and there's a way to stop it, but like Keith so eloquently put it, if it meets the land use plan, if it gets by zoning, if, all those ifs, if one should arise, much to our chagrin, they have the ability to enforce the hotel tax.
And the people have the ability to go remediate out of that country.
Absolutely. And referendum to stop it. I mean, that has happened in the past here.
Would, would you agree that this is somewhat of an encouraging statement in this?
I can't speak to that. I don't know the intent and the spirit in which it was written. To me, it seemed perfunctory. But that's me.
I took it as encouraging.
And I convinced him why you would.
Because, because at this time, from what I'm reading, what I'm, what I have read, the push for them, Hamilton passing down here like that, it's not in their interest. They're going to build one right at the railroad tracks by the McDonald's. It was in the paper this week that the land swap with Cohen Recycles, right there on the Great Miami River across from Spooky Nook, a firm out of Dayton is acquiring that, and they're going to put a hotel there. So, to look nine miles away to say, "Hey, we really like Ross," City of Hamilton, if they were saying, "We'd really like Ross to put in a hotel," they're, they've got two in the, in their kettle right now. I don't, I don't see where we would be a great asset to them. So, so again, hopefully it don't.
At, at this point, but again, this.
Still in black and white.
This opens it up.
Sure.
Possibility, if we, if we're, if we're not in a position where we want to dissolve the JED, I would certainly think there can be some things amended in it. I'm not against development. I mean, I've made it pretty clear about what kind of development I'm against, and that struck me. And I think, I think that the overall question is, to be put to the people of Ross Township, are, are we willing to pay a little more tax to keep development out and to keep our town small?
I don't know, having read that first check that came in the mail this week.
Right, yeah. Or.
I know how bad that's going to hurt.
Yeah, well.
So for me to say, "Oh yeah, I'm willing to pay a little more?"
The hell I am. I think that's worth an ask, myself. If everybody's okay with a, with a JED and changing the landscape of Ross, then, then we know where you stand. But if not, then, then that's something we should chat about.
Isn't it more about, progress is inevitable. We're not going to stop that. That's the way the world works. You know, look at all the electronic nonsense that cram down our necks. We can't watch the purpose for that development, the speed of that development, just coming in here and throwing stuff up in the air. Or the, how much, you know, to take that whole Mars Farm thing and just, "We're going to do all this, and we're going to do it right now." That's just insane.
There's no way that can be developed.
We can also say how we want it.
Yeah.
Do I have permission to speak about the JED on some point?
Yeah.
If, if she's, if she stays with the agenda.
We will finish what's on the, on the list, and we will. Ellen, your, your other questions? We know that I'm somewhat new here and not.
Do you believe that the development generally comes to township?
We have not talked about any strategic taxation development yet.
You have not?
Not, not amongst our meetings.
Yet you're willing to remove the JED, and you have no, nothing to back it up with future development other than to tax the current residents in Ross Township?
You're sure, you're still working on the assumption that Ross Township as a whole wants development? I'm, I'm not sure that's the case.
I'm not saying that. But if you're going to develop something over there, so the only way you can develop that other than going through these different strategies that were put out, the only way you're going to get money for increased services is to tax the current residents. What is wrong with setting something up to where the people that come in and the people, the businesses and what have you, what's wrong with them paying their own taxes?
Yeah, true.
Why does everybody else in Ross, "Well, I'm not going to benefit from that development over there. Why should I have to pay taxes on it? Why should that increase me paying school taxes? I only have a kid in Ross. And I'm on a fixed income now." So, I had to throw that in. But, see what I'm saying? And my whole point to this is, I don't want that, the JED and everything, just to come to this meeting and will have everybody say, "I don't like it, let's get rid of it." I think you have to, if you want to bring in more people into this, because we've done the same process that you're talking about doing, don't just delete something before you know what it's all about.
We want to open it up to the public. We want to get also legal advice.
And we did the same.
We're not going to shoot from the hip.
You wait until you see the number of people that show up for your meetings and whatever. But I'm just saying, if you've got strategic development strategy set up, the people in Ross will not get new taxes. Because that's not the way the JED, the NCI, the TIF, none of the CID, none of that is set up to tax the current people in Ross.
Right.
Okay? You develop something else over there, the only way you're going to get those improvements, road, police, fire department, administration, the only way you're going to get that is by taxing everybody. Now, how many people want more taxes? Look at the grief that was brought up when Butler County, the real estate taxes, property taxes went up. They went up a bunch.
Value, your, your houses went up a bunch too. But we don't hear complaining about that.
I'm not complaining about that. I know the good idea of having a good value for your house.
Yeah.
The school system and everything else. But, the schools, the school in Ross and us, we're involved, we're okay with that because that will generate more money to the Ross school system than you can imagine. But, people don't understand that. They don't understand the value of those JEDs, the NCI, the CID, and the TIF. If they understood the value of those elements, they'd be all for it. Now, there's nothing to say that they can't have a say-so in that development out there. They can. How many meetings did we have down at the school? Did anybody say they wanted certain things in this section or that section? No, they all came down negative. I'm just saying, look at what the, the document is, just don't take section after section and say, "This says." What did it say all around that document? You know, you can't take out a context, what was meant two paragraphs above the ones you read. I could go through there and pick out things too. But I'm just saying, don't get rid of it until you understand what you're getting rid of.
That's why we have no legal advice come in, so we can talk for it.
Good.
Yeah, we're not just going to shoot from the hip.
You were gonna.
But we have to bring it to the people's attention. That's our, that's our.
I understand that, but that's not the way it comes across.
By the way, neither, we want to have an open conversation about it.
Sure.
To make a rational judgment, is it going to be good for the Ross Township? Not just for, "Oh, let's put in a hotel," you know, and everybody complain about it.
Right.
Why can't, why can't you just leave it alone? Leave it in place and use it when you need to use it? You don't have to, I don't, I don't understand. Is it, isn't, is it, there, we don't have to partner with Hamilton or Fairfield. We can do, you can have the thing set up on your own, correct?
No, no.
That's the problem.
Or a township.
We can't do that.
I think we need a revolution.
You need to, we need to balance to do that because we can't charge income tax. And, so that's my thing. I just don't want it to be cut out without going to the work session two weeks from now and seeing what Mr. Woodall has to say, his explanation of it, because apparently people weren't there at the initial meetings, didn't feel it was necessary, whatever the reason was. But, people have to have a say-so in what they're doing, you know?
I think someone with your expertise and experience would be very helpful in helping on something like that if it does get revamped.
Thank you. It can get revamped, if it can be, I don't know. But usually in a contract, it'll say at the end of it whether or not you can change that document, you have to give so many days or week notice to the other side, it's at the end of that document. But, don't just kick it to the curb until you understand, really understand what it is. That's my two cents.
Thank you.
That's a lot more.
Jerry Hilbert wants to speak about the Emergency Alliance, or I'm sorry, the Energy Alliance for Ross Township.
This was short and sweet. My name is Jerry Hilbert, 3663 Layhi Road. What I was wondering is what is, since it's got passed, what is the status, where it is for our electric and gas? Where are we at, at this time?
I can speak on that.
Which energy alliance would you, are you talking about gas or electric?
Both. Both, both. They both passed.
Laurie was going to answer that.
So it gets, it was, certification was sent to the Public Utilities Commission, and that usually takes 30 days. I, our representative with energy alliances anticipates receiving certification, and he will put us out for bids, and he and I have a conversation scheduled for Monday, February 12th, I believe, in the hopes that we will review the bids together, and there is a possibility there will be a recommendation to come before the board at that Thursday's work session. If the pricing is such that he recommends we move forward with one of the bids. So.
How will this be put out to the, the people?
It'll be part of a regular meeting. It'll be part of a meeting.
I have one thing just quickly to say. Has anybody looked at Butler County and what is the lowest place in elevation? It's the corner of 128 Red Longwood River.
Right by the river.
And the corner elevation, right across the street, diagonal from the antique shop, where the gas station was built, where that was built. That was the lowest elevation, and they had to move dirt around and all the rest to keep the same volume of dirt when they did sewer work and all the rest. But I'm trying to say, that is a beautiful piece of property for a farm, but Mother Nature is going to take it back. Where is the water going to come that cannot get into its land from the hard surface of pavement, roads, everything else, parking lots? Where is that water going to go? How do you get it there? To Dry Run Creek, it's fine when it's dry, but it's going to take out the corner down there in the high, behind Horst Bacher's property. They already were talking about doing it. Same thing coming down in all this area down here. Where is the water going to go? For I know, I've got nothing against the JED. I don't understand all of it yet. Somebody should be telling us where the water's going to go. That's all I have to say.
Well, there's a 100-year flood plain, and in order to build UDF, they had to raise it up six foot. Otherwise, they'd be in a flood plain. That's why they could not build until they raised it up. I understand, if, if you don't create the void, where's the water going to go? I understand it. But that was the county and state coming in and making that regulation. We had nothing to do with it, and those can't.
We are going to have to have something to do with it. Or we're going to get flooded. Mother Nature will take it back. So we'll have this one.
Dr. Beth Hensley?
I'll try to be brief. My name is Dr. Beth Hensley. I live at 4293 Jennifer Drive, on the corner, and that's where we are. As a community member, I've been actively involved in lots of things for the years, and I was very concerned when we created the JED. I'm very familiar with this. I have a master's in political science, government law, with a minor in geography and urban planning. My husband's a city official in Fairfield. My parents and my grandparents and all, my family were all contractors and developers. So I've got every acronym and initial at hand, and I'm not in favor of it, and I'll tell you exactly why. I know that we created it with all of the. tell you exactly why. I know that we created it with all of the intention for spooky nook and everything that they were going to do. And it hasn't come into fruition. And I know that there was going to be this grand corridor that we would want to take care of, and the Burns Farm, and all the property and everything were tied to it. And the only question I had about this was, when you're going to enter in a contract for 99 years, you would think you would go to the voters. But it didn't. It was just decision of the trustees, and we elect them, and we trust them to make those decisions. I've read the 78-page JED years ago, and I just refreshed myself on it. And I'm savvy enough with my political, being able to teach collegiate government to be able to read the legalese and know specifically where it goes. And I'm not sure where the status is, whether it can be eliminated, but I know it can be changed. It's specifically stated within the documents that it absolutely can be changed. I'm not against growth. We're going to grow. And I want us to grow. But historically, when developments occur, the burden of the development is on the developer, not on the taxpayers. That's part of the reason I was very against a TIF. Because if you look at the number of houses that would have been developed within the community as we had looked at that with a plan, they would have added within the TIF additional millage to pay for that public-private partnership. With the number of kids and families that would have moved in, we've all seen our happy, lucky property tax. We grabbed our wallet in our hearts at the same time. They would actually have millage that could be incrementally higher, up to 10 mils higher than what a regular home would pay. Ross local schools would never pass another levy again. Not because with the number of homes and kids coming into that new community, we'd never pass it again. My biggest concern when it comes to the JED is this, and it's about changing the JED, whether it comes into fruition, whatever it is. But a JED has the power to approve substance administration and zoning and other land use regulations, building codes, permanent public improvements, and other regulatory and proprietary matters. That comes directly from Ohio statutory law. The commissioners could then, based on those things, approve things that may not be in the best interest of what clearly the voters and the township want within that. Because you have a group of unelected commissioners who can act unilaterally based on those decisions. Could they approve based on what the land uses there? Could they approve multi-unit dwellings? Yes. It's statutorily in there that they can do that. My problem with this, and I would ask you guys to think about this change when you go to me, because it can be changed. It can't be amended with the agreement between the parties, to look at one clause specifically about those appointees. When a person is appointed, in the beginning, they have a staggered start of where they are up to a four-year term. After that, the removal of a commissioner in a JED has to be removed for cause. And it lays out very, within specificity, what those are. And what I would ask you to do is to add this small piece, to just say that the commissioners serve at the will of the trustees, or the Hamilton City Council, whoever is looking at that specifically, to they serve at their will without cause. It's just one small piece. Because while you appoint the commissioners, we elect you. And if they're not doing what you want them to do, then it comes back to you. And we all know what a lovely unelected bureaucracy can do. And we'd like to not have that in our lovely little community.
Agreed.
Amen to that.
Thank you. Steve Fegley wants to speak about John Fisher.
Steve Fegley, 4049 Cypress Lane. I want to give a belated thanks to John for stepping up. Ross Township needed somebody. I needed a trustee. Like everybody here, I'm interested in township business, probably like almost everybody is here. I have zero interest in being a trustee. Specifically, and I've told that to four trustees, current, past, not told it today, but I am not built to sit up there with a stone face while people come to this podium, question your honesty, question your integrity, question your mother's virtue, knowing tomorrow at Larry's, Idea Express, BP, UDF, people have never been to a trustees' meeting. Everybody here has probably heard these conversations. Whether it's intentional lies or embellish, I don't know. But they misrepresent what is said. They misrepresent the positions. I'm thankful we have people who will walk into that position knowing it's going to happen. So thanks to him, in particular, his zoning knowledge. We can't get through a, we can't get through a meeting without zoning coming up. And his, his knowledge has been passed on to these trustees. And so thank you to John for doing that.
Thank you, too.
Thank you, John.
Jacob Walder of Walter Automotive.
I just had a couple of questions. When, when everybody here talks about the JED, they assume that it's about Burns Farm over here.
No.
350 acres or whatever. Yeah. But from the map and the contract, nothing to do with the Burns Farm is within the JED. I mean, it, we just recently bought the piece of property across the street from the school, and we're going to build our shop. And I'm not saying that I'm not willing to pay the tax, or, I mean, nobody likes paying taxes. But if, if this thing was set up for development, and the, the only thing we've talked about in the last five years was the Burns Farm being developed. And it's not even in the map of taxed property. I mean, how, how is that even relevant? I mean, is there contractual agreement from somebody that's going to be either selling it or buying it that's going to be in that?
So do you think that just what's in there right now, it's all is going to be allotted into that? Why would it have six lots of your school road, the residential, which touched the Brown's Farm, or Brown's, or Burns Farm, I'm sorry?
Right.
What do you think they have those in there for?
I'm not sure. That's why I'm here asking.
That's why I'm asking. So you think it's not going to go in there? It could.
Right.
It probably will.
Right. But depending on who develops it, I mean...
If it's pulled into the JED, yeah.
Right. But the, the front edge on 128 here, which is going to be the prime real estate for a commercial business, does not show in the map of the, of the contract within the JED.
Yet. That's, that's the important word, yet.
Is there, is there a contract that...
Who put it in there, first of all? Who came up with what properties could be put into the JED? Who, who put it out there?
Well, that's what I'm asking.
That's what we were, that's what we're asking.
No idea.
It doesn't say. So who, who put them in there?
So how do we promise, or how do we, how do we set it up to where the, whoever buys the property and develops the 350 acres, I mean...
As long as they follow what's in there as far as the land use, they can't buy that and develop it.
At that point, we introduce them to the JED?
That's what some of our questions are for legally. Can, in my own land, can I say, I want to put it in the JED? Do I have that, that right to do so? I don't know. That's why we want the lawyer to come in and explain things to us, because it doesn't really explain it here.
Right. I mean, it, that's, that's the contract that's signed by...
As trustees.
The trustees and the city. And the, the only, the only point I'm bringing up is that even though I'm an existing business, and we bought a piece of property to move our business, and now we're introduced to this tax, we're, we're literally the only business that's going to be paying this tax, as of right now.
As of right now.
And then the, the, the big piece of development that everybody in the township's talking about is not even, it's not even on the map to be able to tax. So if, if, if somebody bought that property and they said, well, we don't want to, we don't want to do that. We don't want to pay the, the tax. According to that, they don't have to. Right?
No, they do. They do. If they're in that commission with your property, what will happen is the JED commissioners will determine the usage and zoning and authorization for what you do. I'm sorry, I'm speaking.
You're answering our question for us.
I'm sorry. They will authorize what you can build, where you can place it, all of those things that will have to do with your property. They will govern you.
So, so when somebody buys this, Hamilton will say they have to pay the tax?
Yes. It's, it's between the agreements together. They're tied together. I guess that's the 95, five split. JEDs are very common among municipalities and districts. They're, it's just really different coming to Ross.
Right.
You know, and I remember, you know, it's hard to think about Ross, because, you know, for years, the kids had shirts that said, Russell Ross, and these crowded, we got pigs, and people were prowling. So it's hard to think we need the development thing.
Right.
But I mean, when you look at the development, but the question becomes, you know, and this is what they're going to have, whether, you know, when they're with all those acronyms that have different pieces that work within different areas. A lot of the TIFs and the NCA's work in different areas to create different zones for economic development, particularly within cities. Columbus has it backwards.
I just want to, I mean, we're not just going off of Ron Kaufman's words, saying, yes, it'll be in the JED if I develop.
Yes, please.
That's what I just...
There's 17 parcels, and only four of them, though, according to the law.
Yeah, they've taken them.
And, and probably where a JED can be within the state regulations.
Right.
So that's what it is. Now, whether the JED continues or not, or it gets amended or not, those are conversations that we don't want to...
So since he's a landowner and he's in that JED, can he, can he withdraw his land from that?
No, we cannot. No, we cannot.
Hmm.
No, we cannot.
Not a good thing for you.
Well, that, that's what I'm here to figure out.
All right, Laurie's got something.
When the parcels that were identified to be in the JED are all vacant, non-revenue-producing properties. The two large Burns Farm parcels were conscientiously left out because it is Burns Farm LLC. The farming generates a profit. The current landowner did not want to be included in because her profits would have been taxed.
Right.
Also, at the time of the sale of the property, that income would have been taxed. At the time, the developer said, I will want this in the JED because I will also want the other tools that will be available, such as the TIF, possibly the NCA. So he said, I, I would be willing to put the property in the JED. So you will consider the other tools. So fast forward, he's out of the picture. But the same will be true. More than likely, any developer that purchases those large parcels will need, will, will probably need to come to the township to ask for assistance. There's going to be roadway, reconstruction of intersections, just, you know...
Right.
There, there will be infrastructure needs from the township. So the developer will, would probably come to the township and say, would you put in a TIF to help me with the infrastructure needs that this is going to have? And the township would probably say, yes, we will put, we will, you know, construct a TIF for your project, but we would like for you, put the property in the JED. Once again, a quid pro quo.
Okay.
But to back up, all of the properties that are currently on this map are non-income-producing properties.
Okay.
That is why those properties are included. The current owner of the Burns Farm, being in favor of the sale of her large parcels and the development of included vacant properties along School Road and a little triangle on Leahy that's part of her property, they are non-income-producing properties.
Okay. So through their permitting process, they would be forced to be into the JED? Not probably.
Encouraged, strongly encouraged.
Strongly encouraged. A developer to, to get, to get a TIF from the township, the township would say, that's fine, as long as you put your properties in the JED.
The other question I had is, it talks about new businesses being on these properties. We're a pre-existing business within the township, paying the property taxes through rent to the township a portion. Is there any offset there on what's new income versus, like, what, what our growth is? Is there, are we taxed on the whole income? I don't need it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Jake. Someone else you had? What's your name?
Patricia Stewart.
Patricia, if you want to step up to the mic and say your name and your address?
My name is Patricia Stewart. I actually live at 2801 since I moved to Road. I live at Jean Witzbacher's house. I've been there for 10 years, God rest his soul. As far as the water's concerned, when it rains for 24 hours, the yard floods. So the water is a concern. It will flood. This man is correct. He knows what he's talking about. You guys are doing all the fine print, all the financial work, obviously, but you're not looking at the aftermath of the building of hotels. I've been homeless in my car for a year and a half. And I put 43,000 miles on my car, all the way from the hurricane in Flora last year, Tyrone, Pennsylvania, all the way to West Virginia, all the way past Missouri. I have stopped at every hotel along the way, and they are full of nothing but pimps and prostitutes. And it is one of the biggest drug rings I have ever seen in my life. I have had a price put on my head. I've been tried to been bought and sold by people in there. I've been threatened. And I'm just a traveler. The dangers of a hotel in a small town, you're looking at increased drug rates, increased overdoses, you're looking at more prostitution. The darkness of the streets is going to creep up in here so good, you guys won't be able to control it. And then at that point, the only thing we can do is get our knees and pray to Jesus. Right?
We start shooting.
So I would highly recommend against any hotel in this town. The hotel down here in Ross, I was there last year. I sat down for my first drink. I'll be 40 in March. I was minding my own business, baseball game was on, and this gentleman, very handsome man, white male, said he was from Oxford, out of a landscaping company. And I was sitting there talking to someone off the Morgan Township Fire Department I used to live with for three years. And he bought me a drink respectfully, and he walked outside. And when he walked back in, the gentleman that was on the other side of the bar walked over to me and said, oh, I heard you had grandkids. I said, yeah, I do. And that's the last thing I remember. When I woke up, I was in the hotel room, and I don't remember how I got in there. And this gentleman that I'm speaking about, I will keep his name private, literally tried to knock on the door and get me out. The hotel would not let him in there to get me, to keep me safe. I did not know this man. This gentleman from the fire department knew. I did not know this man. He tried to save me. The hotel would not let him in. He went to Jean's door and told Jean and my mom about it. Hey, come save this girl. I could have died. And they still wouldn't let nobody in to save me, this hotel down here in Ross. So Ross is a small town, and we have the security of a small town. And at this point, we're on a verge of being compromised. So my best advice is stay away from hotel building in small areas, because you're going to let the darkness into the small town, and we will be compromised. And there's nothing we can do about it at that point. Because when the darkness comes in, it comes in pretty strong. So I would take this under deep consideration about your hotels that you're trying to build a JED. It's devastating to women, and it's unsafe for women. And hotels are nothing but pimps and prostitutes. The guys that, the maintenance men at these hotels, I mean, I've got documentation of every hotel I've stayed at. I can name three on Route 4, starting at Jungle Gems all the way down to past Buffalo Wild Wings, where I have literally been cornered in by gangs trying to snatch me out of my room in the middle of the night. I'm literally, it's very unsafe. And the, the maintenance men, they're posing as maintenance men, but they're pimps. The prostitutes were the ones cleaning the rooms, but now they've been promoted to office, because all the Indians that have came in... because all the Indians that have came in are now cleaning. And they leave behind grime, germs, diseases in the drain, they don't clean it, there's, excuse my language, there's private hair on the walls in these hotels ran by all these Indians that have taken over all these hotels throughout the United States. I'm not being rude or anything like that, I'm just speaking, speaking raw facts. And it's just a cycle of dysfunction that I am not looking forward to this. My mom and dad grew up in this town. The greenhouse that got tore down across from Ross Hardware, my grandpa built that house. My, my, you know, the yellow brick house on Main Street over there, my grandma brought me up in that house when I spent time with her, God rest her souls. You know, my dad was SP5 in the military, and one thing he always taught me is timing and movement is everything. And when they're giving you guys a low ball price to do the JED, it's a trap. It's a trick to bring in the darkness, and that's the way a city works, okay?
Thank you. Name and your address, please.
I'm Laura Hyler. I reside at 1420 Hein Road, been a Ross Township resident for years, Morgan Township prior to that for 50 years, and I have the CPA office here in Ross. So a lot of my clients are Ross businesses, and I'm just encouraged to hear that you want to have discussion, open discussion about the JED. I think there's a positive to it and a negative, obviously, but one of my requests would be that we look into the option of some sort of grandfathering in of our Ross businesses or potentially a five-year exemption from the JED tax or something. I mean, I've not negotiated with a JED before, but we have with the development within Hamilton, and there's certain packages that can be offered to existing businesses for expansion or growth or improvement. And I just think that there's some opportunity there that we have an obligation to our current Ross businesses to encourage them to grow, encourage them to move into the JED, but yet give them some opportunity to... As a business, I don't think I would be encouraged to move into the JED if my employees are going to face a 2% income tax and I'm going to face a 2% income tax. So I think there's some work that needs to be done with our existing Ross businesses. So that's just, you know, my opinion and my request, that we try to help our Ross businesses who want to expand into the JED.
Okay. Thank you, Laura. Anyone? Name and address.
I know where you live. Dan York, 4246 Oriole. As far as the JED goes, it seems to me that it's something that we can use to our advantage at some point. It can still give us the information that we need about businesses coming in to just completely eliminate it. Doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me at this point. Now, second thing, I, I think that one of the things that we truly need around here close is an urgent care. Now, we got the, we got medical facilities all over the place, but if I got to go to urgent care, I got to go down Corrine, down here on Corrine Avenue. I like going down there. Plus, it's further than driving right out here where it used to be. It's something that, it's something that maybe we should be looking into because that's something that is definitely beneficial to the residents of this township.
Thanks. Can you answer your question about businesses? If you were going to open a business and you were going to come to Ross and you'd say, who's going to be my competitor? Oh, I have no competitor. That'd be a great thing for you, would it not?
Sure.
Right? How often would I get business and how many repetitive of business from the same people would I get? We have 8,700 people living in our township. Do you really think you're going to get repetitive business from 8,700 people? Ask the people who are already in business in this area, they're not striving, they're not, you know, they're not really doing a great job. Now, Gold Star, Wendy, people like that are, but that's why the hardware store went out of business?
Well, Dave, I want to tell you something.
Okay, go ahead.
You know, if you look across this country, man, right now, we do, we don't make anything anymore. We don't make a damn thing. We stick, we take foreign parts and we put cars together. We take foreign parts and we put motorcycles together, even Harley-Davidson, okay? Why not be looking for those small businesses, small manufacturers that can actually do something and actually employ people? We don't need any more Taco Bells.
Biggie.
Skylines, you know, when, when they were putting in Taco, they tore down the bank, I was hoping we was going to see like a mom and pop place like Country Barrel out there in Okeana. That is what Ross is about, okay? It's not about, well, first off, hotel is completely a ridiculous thing here anyway. And you put it close to a school, you're just asking for kids to be snatched. That's all, and that's a big business here, even for some of our politics in Washington, What we need is, we need some housing that people 20, 25 years old can go out and afford. Kid working in a factory making 15, $20 an hour, he can't afford to go out and buy a $450, $500,000 home, okay? That just ain't happening unless he wants to go so deep in debt that he's going to be screwed in six months anyway. What I'd like to see is maybe houses like, I know, I grew up in Northbrook, okay? Houses along that line as far as simple, basic structures that younger people can afford. Sure, have your half million, million dollar homes, but that's something for young people to work for, to sit here and say, well, we're not going to do anything because it's not repetitive business. You get a parts manufacturer out, and I'm not talking about someplace like Pacific Manufacturing, that's Japanese-owned, a Japanese indoctrination, because a lot of those foreign companies are exactly the same way. They want you in there no matter what. You get, you get sick, tough. If you get sick for any length of time, tough. You ain't got a job. I'm living proof of that one. But now, if you're going to use this to use, to do away with the JED, gives us nothing. If we utilize it to attract that small manufacturer of this or that small manufacturer of that, an optical lab, an optical lab makes eyeglasses, a business that I've participated in off and on over the years. There's one over in Eber, major manu, major manufacturer, of course, now it's foreign-owned. But that could, that could happen right here. You got the VA right down the road, right down here in Cincinnati and up in Dayton, you could be doing contractor, they could be doing contract work for veterans to help make their eyeglasses. There's a whole lot of different things that could be happening here. Aftermarket motorcycle parts, aftermarket car parts, and I'm not talking about, I'm talking about building cars. Though somebody might set up a little business to do, build a custom car, like a Jesse James type crap. But utilize, people need to look at this from a sensible point of view. Not big places, and not nothing, something here for the people, the people of this, of this township. Not everybody makes $100, $150,000 a year, okay? Not everybody even makes $60,000 a year. Some, you know, some people are out here and they're making $20,000, $30,000 a year and trying to make ends meet. Those are the people that we need to be helping. Those are the people we need to be looking at because those are the people that are residents of the, this township.
There's nothing saying that a business couldn't come in and already do that without a JED. They could go right on down the street and put one in, but it has to be, you know, it's such, a business owner has to want to do that.
But utilizing the JED to look at these different businesses and use it for what it is. We can't, we can't just do away with it. We, we can't just do it on our own. Either way, we end up giving Hamilton money or we give Butler County money. So why not just use what you got? You get in a gunfight, if you get in a gunfight and all you got's a 22, you use the 22, even if they're using 45s.
Anyone else?
Something else?
We're limited.
Recamp?
Five minutes.
Next meeting.
Topics for work session, next work session, continued discussion on the Ross-Hamilton JED with legal guidance from Patrick Woodside from Frost Brown Todd Attorneys. Continued discussion on possible projects submitted for Butler County Board of Commissioners, local community allocation of ARPA, and is known as SLR funding. Future work session, recommendations from trustee Bellauer. There are five. Township policy on new utilization of marijuana. Update or review township policy on time clock usage. Speed limit change on Lay High Road just north of School Road from 55 miles per hour to 35 miles per hour because of the new traffic entering from Venice Crossing. Sale of unused property on Morgan Lane and replace township sign at US 27 and State Route 128. Executive session, remove, or move for the adoption of motion number 24-024 to retire to executive session to discuss the appointment of a public employee in accordance with Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22G1. Time?
7:43.
All right. Need a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Bellauer.
Yes.
Trustee Young.
Yes, ma'am.
Trustee McGurran.
Yes. There will be...